My clock, Paul.
We started the recording, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Town Council meeting today, May 10th. It is 7 o'clock. And would you please call the role, Madam Clerk?
Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Valerie DiPaolo. Here. William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli. Christopher Palmeri.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Paul Chaplinski.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
I am here, thank you so much. Could we stand for the prayer? And we'll go right into the flag salute. Madam Clerk.
Heavenly Father, give us grace tonight to understand that the impact we make upon this community is not just for today, but for generations to follow. Help us do what is right, and if need be courageous. We commit ourselves, our decisions, and the town of Southington under your care. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. May I have a motion on the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Michael. Any additions, deletions?
Madam Chair, this is Mark. Just for the record, Kathy, I believe Mr. Morelli has joined the meeting.
Yep. Very good. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, thank you. Any opposed? Hearing none, I believe it's a unanimous vote on that. Thank you so much. Let's go right into councilperson's communication, please. I know that, Tom, you wanted to go ahead and tell us some great things that happened over the weekend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, this past Saturday, May 8th, the Rotary Playscape of Southington at Memorial Park had its grand opening ribbon cutting. Several members of the Rotary Club of Southington and the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain were there. Former Councilwoman Donna Selly did a terrific job on the project and also served as the MC for the event on Saturday. So just an overall great job. If you haven't gone down to see the playscape, if you don't have kids or for whatever reason, just take a drive by there. It really came out fantastic. So, great job by everyone involved.
It really was the largest gift that our Rotary Club, even though our Rotary Club helped very much with the van shell, but this was the largest donation ever by a Rotary Club here in Southington. And it's absolutely amazing. I want to thank also the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain. I had the pleasure of serving on their board for eight years. And so it's beautiful way, a collaboration that came together was beautiful. Thank you, everybody.
And I was, I was in attendance with Councilman Pulis, Councilman Palmeri, and Councilwoman DiPaolo, along with the town manager. And I'm sure they'll comment some more on it as well. But lastly, I will not be at the May 24th meeting. So if anyone needs to get ahold of me, I will be available by phone or email. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for sharing that with us. Could I also hear from, let's see, Mike Del Santo had, oh, I'm sorry, Chris, did you want to mention something about the dedication? Excuse me, Chris, Chris Pulis, did you want to say something about the dedication? I thought you raised your hand.
Yeah, I did. I was just gonna say, a group of education members who's on this call was there as well, along with some other members of the community. Some other councilperson communications, but if you want to go to Mike first, you can go to Mike first.
Well, that would be fine. Mike, Mike, I know you had a very fun, a fun morning over at Lake Compounds.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, please, tell us.
I was at the opening day for Lake Compounds. It was the 175th time that Lake Compounds opened its doors for the year. So I was honored to, to give a few words in recognition of such a wonderful place. There was a gorgeous cake there by Sassy Mama Sleeps. It's unbelievable, this cake. I don't know how she does it, but the cake was delicious and the tour was great. And some exciting things happening at Lake Compounds. We are so fortunate to have them, you know, as one of Southington's destinations, even though a very small part of it is in Southington. A lot of folks do come to Southington to visit the park. So we're hoping that that continues. It was a great, great morning. Mr. Chaplinski was there as well. And Christina Volpe from Planning and Zoning was there.
Yeah, that was wonderful.
We all took a tour and it was just a wonderful, wonderful event. So let's make sure we support Lake Compounds this year.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I personally want to thank you and Mr. Lombardi for filling in for me on both of these things. I had another engagement that I could not break. And so I really appreciate, appreciate all of you coming to all of the events. And that was wonderful. I, I just want to mention that this is Nursing Home Week, and the Southington Care Center and the Summit at Plansville are celebrating and recognizing nursing staff in, and the whole staff within their nursing homes. And so we want to congratulate them. So anybody else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had three items. The first is last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. It was an off week for our, for Town Council. But looking back, I wanted to ensure that we were thanking our teachers in the community who, especially this year, are putting it all out there. It is, it is probably the most difficult year in history for all these teachers who are teaching. And we couldn't be more appreciative of the efforts that they've put out there to educate our students. They are, each and every one of them have their own story about trying times and probably more than one. So please, this council, on behalf of this council, I'm sure everybody agrees, we reach out to them and say thank you for all they're doing in the community. Just a wonderful tribute to them this past year and a half. Madam Chair, also, I wanted to, because I know you won't, I know that you're not going to say anything nice about yourself. So I'm going to say something nice about you, Madam Chair, and say what a great job you did organizing and leading the National Day of Prayer.
Oh, thank you.
On the town green this past week. I attended that with you and many of our church leaders. And it was a real honor to be there and, and participate in that event. There were so many different items that many people in the community were, were praying about. And I thought it was a really nice opportunity to be out there doing that with everybody. And it was my first time. And I can say that I'll be there again in the future as much as I can. So thank you, Madam Chair, for your leadership there.
Thank you so much.
Lastly, I wanted to, and I'll talk more about it through an open space, just give a shout out to all the residents who participated in this past week's referendum. You know, it was a historic referendum with more than 3,100 people coming out to, to vote. And I'll give a little bit more detailed update in the open space portion. But just a thank you to everybody who came out and participated. It's great to see so many residents activating and participating in these type of events.
Great. Thank you so much. And Chris, I saw that, your hand up. Go ahead. Chris Pulis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a few things I wanted to report on. I wanted to wish one day late, Councilwoman DiPaolo, a happy Mother's Day, along with all the mothers in Southington. And it was a, we had some great weather in the beginning of the day, got a little rainy in the afternoon, but it was a nice day to celebrate Southington's mothers. After the playground dedication, I headed over down to Bread for Life for the 30th Annual Food Drive in honor of Cheryl Jankura. Also honoring this year, special members of our community, Pat Lorin and R. Rich, who've passed away. And it was such an operation down there. I brought some food in, but they had younger volunteers unloading cars. They said they'd had, at that point in time, about 11, 11:15, they had, had already a very successful day. I'm looking forward to hearing how they did overall. But it was a great event. And lastly, as a teacher, thank you, Mr. Chaplinski, for remembering Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to echo that sentiment. The teachers in Southington, my kids have been in school all year long. And as a teacher, I value that. And I'm so proud of the leadership of our town for making that happen. But I also noticed on social media, and I was not aware of it, that it was also National Nurses Appreciation Week this week. So shout out to all of our nurses as well.
Thank you so much. Any other council? Yes, Chris Palmeri.
Um, thank you. A couple update. About some of what STEPS was up to. I actually have some other. And some other news to share. First of all, thank you for taking the time to meet with the youth council. They were very excited to have you as a special guest. So thank you for doing that. A couple other updates. A letter was sent to all tobacco merchants in town reminding them of the Tobacco 21 law, which we know, we, the council were, were leaders in that. And then it ultimately ended up being a state initiative. So they're just sending a reminder about that, especially with masks. It's just harder, you know, to identify people. So a reminder. STEPS is in the process of working on a resolution about the dangers of flavored tobacco and nicotine products. You might remember I mentioned that Officer Laporte, who's the resource officer, and Megan Albanese had been to all the elementary schools to talk about vape education. But in addition to that, STEPS was able to provide a parent discussion guide on vaping for each parent in grades four and five. And that was done through state funding specific to vaping prevention. This is very exciting. There's going to be a new partnership with the Southington Police Department and STEPS. And they're replacing the DARE program with a more interactive program. It's going to be an evidence-based prevention curriculum that's created by STEPS. And most exciting of all, if you remember last meeting, I mentioned that we had applied for a state grant from Demus. And if you remember, it was $125,000. Well, we actually received it. So Southington was awarded that grant through the work with STEPS.
Tremendous, tremendous.
Isn't that great?
Yeah.
So the money would be used towards strategic prevention efforts and maybe bringing in additional staff. And again, it's $125,000 grant brought to the town of Southington. So it's very exciting to share that.
And for our kids and keeping them off of, keeping them away from risky behaviors, whether it be drugs or alcohol or whatever. That's wonderful, Chris. Great news. Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mike Del Santo. Hey, Chris, this is for Mr. Palmeri. Chris, can you just, is the new program in place of DARE, are the police still going to be involved or?
Yeah, the police are doing it in partnership with STEPS. So it's a partnership between the Southington Police Department and, and STEPS.
Excellent. Okay.
Absolutely. Just, Mike, it's basically modeled on what they just did with the vaping prevention. It was such an excellent partnership. They're continuing that. And the police department is, is on board 100%.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. Great. Any other council matter communications? Adele?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yes, I just want to echo about the Rotary Club and send out a big congrats to them. The, the playscape looks wonderful. And I think it's going to be great for the youth in our town to be able to, to do that. So congrats to everyone that was involved. It sounds like there were a lot of people involved in that. And it was great to be there. Bread for Life, I did speak with Donna Air. I went there almost when it was ending. And their food drive really was successful. So Councilman Pulis had mentioned that. So I think it was a big success for them. And I just want to thank Megan Albanese and the STEPS Youth Council. It really was fun to speak with them. And hopefully, we're going to have a program, maybe where we can have more leaders in the community start to come in and talk with the, with the youth council at different times during the year. They asked some very difficult questions. So everybody needs to be ready. But a big thank you to them. And lastly, I just wanted to put a reminder out there, the Pride Celebration events are coming up. So the Pride Celebration, Southington Pride is, there's going to be events from May 21st through June 7th. There's going to be events at Sloper's, at SoCA, a lot of the restaurants, a lot of our businesses have events that are going to be taking place. We're going to have the flag raising ceremony on June 5th at 9:00 AM at the, at the municipal center. We have a nice ceremony that's going to take place with that. And we just found out that St. Paul's Church downtown, they are having a service, you know, the flag raising of their own on Friday, May 21st at 4 o'clock. And they've welcomed all, everyone in the community to come to that. And if anybody's looking for a listing of the events, the Southington Pride Facebook page is probably the best spot to get the events. Or please contact myself. So just want to, I'll put a reminder at the next meeting too. But thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else? Jim, I see that hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to very quickly say thank you to the residents for showing up at the polls to weigh in on the purchase of the golf course development rights. As you guys know, I've been on planning and zoning prior to the Town Council for many years. I was heavily involved in the POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development. And it was determined that that was a really key, critical thing for the town. And it's heartwarming to me to see the people show up and really support that. So thank you to all the residents that took the time out of their schedules to go and vote for that. And also, I do want to say thank you to the sellers. Again, that opportunity did not have to be extended to the town of Southington, and it was graciously. And so again, you know, for the neighbors, I think they did a fantastic service through the residents of Southington. And I want to thank them for that. So I'm excited about what happens down the road.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any other hands. So we're going to be moving on. And our next order of business is the action on all budgets. I think we'll let the motions speak for themselves and discussions I'm sure will follow. So may I have a motion on item A, the Board of Education budget?
Madam Chair, this is Bill. I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Bill, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve $100,592,626 for the Board of Education operating budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that. It's Mike Del Santo.
Thank you, Mike. Let's open it up for discussion. Anybody wish to discuss this?
Just a question.
Chris, yeah.
Can we clarify, what, what, where does this stand in line with what the Board of Finance recommended?
Okay.
I don't know if Amelia.
Yep. So, Mr. Shota, could you answer that for us, please?
Yes, Amelia has all the numbers. She's working on them right now as you just gave your motion. So Amelia, what's the difference?
Um, that would be a reduction of $1,498,500.
Uh, but an increase from the prior budget of $200,000, am I correct?
$291,181, yes.
Closer to $300,000. Okay, very good. Okay. So let's open it up for discussion. Anyone?
I guess I'm going to begin. I, I have some concerns. The Board of Finance already reduced that budget by $400,000. Honestly, I'm a bit taken aback to hear that for the first time tonight. I, I, I don't know what to say. I think that over the years, it's been demonstrated that the budget is prepared leanly in a way so that unfortunately, minimal gains are made. And to reduce an additional million dollars when it was already cut, million dollars and change, when it was already cut $400,000, I'm concerned about.
Thank you.
Thank.
Um.
Madam Chair, if I can, if I can respond?
Sure.
Chris is done?
Please, Bill.
Again. So I'm not, you know, I'm not oblivious to the motion I just made. And I also would say that, you know, I have a son who's going to start Darrenowski next year. So I have more, you know, skin in the game than anybody. What this motion is about, though, is more the circumstances of our time. I, this should not be instructed by any future councils. We just went through, hopefully, what's once in a 100-year event. We had federal funding sent to us. This is just one part of not raising taxes on the businesses and the taxpayers in town of Southington. We have a new superintendent coming in. I would ask the superintendent personally, get creative, do not cut student services, figure out what we can do, liberally interpret the federal funding, have some transparent discussions with other boards. And I, and I have confidence, and he was unanimously approved. I'm looking forward to how he's going to handle this. I think he's going to do great. And I'm looking forward to it. But I, I'm not, I'm not oblivious to the, to what we just made. But again, like I said, I want to reiterate, it's part of not raising taxes on the businesses and the taxpayers of town of Southington.
Okay, any of, anyone else? Adele?
Madam Chair. So I guess, yeah, I'm a bit surprised too at the, at the amount of a reduction. I do know that the, with the, with the reduction of the $400,000, it seems to me that with a reduction of that amount, that would, I think that would make things difficult. If that, that amount is taken out of their operating budget, just to be able to fund, you know, things like salaries and benefits and things like that, would they have to start digging into their, their major projects funds? And then the major projects, you know, can't move forward. So I just think it has a, and also if, if state, you know, if grant funding goes away, you know, it's a big hit on their operating budget, I guess is what I'm thinking. And, you know, that can impact a lot of, that could have a negative impact in a lot of different areas.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Mike.
Mike Del Santo. So just, just a matter of clarification that the Board of Education, the educational side and the town side did receive some federal funding this past year. So that came into play as well. So I just want to remind everyone that that one came in as well.
If I can just respond to that, just with Mike's comment, the thing that's really important about supplement operational funds, so those are for one-time expenditures, they cannot be used to fund things that are in our normal operation budget. So I think that's huge and it's important for people to understand.
Nope, that's, that's a great point. And that's the same thing with the town side. And we're going to get to that in a little bit as well.
Okay. I, Tom, did you want to share something about, about the, the use of that money that you found? Are you, you're, open up your mic, Tom. Tom, I can't hear you. Your, your mic is off.
Sorry. Yeah, some others had their hands up. So I don't.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah. You know what? I think we are all a little bit surprised at the, at the size of this cuts. And, and I don't, if this was any other year, I don't think I would ever support this amount of reduction. The only reason that I could, could go along with it is because I, of the understanding of the approximately $6 million that the school board should be receiving. And, and I will say that out of, this is my eighth budget. This is by far was the hardest one. But, you know, the Federal Cares Act, there's a document that came out from the Connecticut State Department of Education, and it, and it has a bullet point of eligible level activities. And, and under that list, it does say other activities that are necessary to maintain operations and continue, continuity of, continuity of services and continuing to employ existing staff. So I'm not really pleased with this reduction. I don't think anybody is. And I do worry about future budgets. And I think we all need to be aware that we, we might be seeing larger increases in the future to get back to where we need to be. But I think in today's day and age, the pandemic, a lot of people lost their jobs. I think we really have to make a statement to the overall taxpayer of the town. And I, and I will say that I have 100% faith in the administration of both the elected Board of Ed members and the staff of the, you know, the, the management of the school district. And I, I'm confident that they will do the best they can with these resources and understanding that this will be a difficult year.
Thank you. Yep, Chris, Chris Pulis, please.
Um, I'll just echo some of the comments that my, Mr. Palmeri and Mrs. DiPaolo have said. This is a significant budget. I can tell you from operating within public education, there's lots of changes, lots of new procedures that are in place that are going to stay in place, that cost money, that we're going to have to continue to do. And as time goes on, federal and state funding is going to, it's going to stop. And we're going to put ourselves up against a fiscal cliff. Because in our next budget, there's going to have to be monies put in to compensate for what had to be cut out this year. I think it's reckless. And I think it's, and while we're, while this is being proposed as saving tax dollars for families, ultimately, it's going to hurt families because it's going to reduce the quality of education that we offer to this town, which is darn good right now.
Okay, Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to comment that this budget number is a $300,000 increase over last year's budget. And last year, the school seemed to function just fine, as far as I know. So how would this be a major cut to the school if we took this additional money away? This additional money is growth money. And again, we're in a time, we're in an economic time that's uncertain. And I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Southington to keep pouring money into the Board of Ed. So again, I think that the arguments, although they sound great, I don't think they're viable. Private sectors require to do with what they have. And I think it's time for the public sector to do this. Thank you.
I would only add that this is not meant, this zero increase in our overall, our overall budgets, will not be able to, as you said, Chris Pulis, this is not something that we know we can maintain. However, this is really the, the second year of the pandemic. And people are just returning to work. Many are not returning to work. We have landlords who have not been able to collect rent for, for months and months and months. We have people who are dying to get back into the workforce and still can't. So for this year, we have been very, very careful about major increases in our budget. And so that's my two cents. I think that none of us like this. None of us are going yay. We understand its difficulty. My heart goes out to the school system. I know that there's, and the Board of Education, I know there's going to be great discussion about this. I do, however, feel that this is unique to this year and to last year. If we can maintain a zero increase for the citizens of Southington. We also have just gone through reassessment, reevaluation on homes. Some people are looking at a, an increase on the value of their homes. All of that plays into this. So I'm going to stop my comments. I got my two cents in. But are there any other comments from the, the Town Council members? I don't see a hand. Oh, I see. Valerie, go ahead.
Just briefly, Madam Chair, just, I, I just want to say that I, I know we, I understand the goal of zero increase to our taxpayers. But I guess the, the question for me is at what expense? You know, it's at, at the expense of, you know, of families that have children in school and at the expense of, of our schools, of, of, you know, projects and, you know, salaries and benefits and.
But isn't that what the $4 million or $6 million is going to be used for? It's for projects. It's for things that, excuse me, I'm speaking to the council. I don't know, I don't know who's talking outside. Paul, would you please make sure that everyone's mic is, this is a very difficult, a very difficult thing right now.
Well, Madam Chair, I guess just to, just from my perspective, it's, you know, you're, you're digging, it's, it's the operating budget. It's their standard operating budget. And I think that's what it's cutting into.
Which has been increased by $300,000, plus the over, the rollover money that is coming in this year that. that is coming in this year. That we don't know exactly the amount, but I would assume it'll be close to last year. So, all right, I, I don't want to go back and forth. Thank you, Val. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else on the council? I hear no one else. So, um, there was a motion on the floor. There was a second. Um, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo? No. Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
No.
Pulis?
No.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to item B, a motion to increase both town clerk fees and building fees by fifty thousand dollars each. I'm sorry, Tom, you were going to make that motion. I read the motion before you had a chance. Tom, go ahead and reread it for us, please.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to increase the town clerk fees on page eleven and the building fees on page six by fifty thousand dollars each.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Del Santo. Okay, uh, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, it's open for discussion. Would anyone on the council like to discuss this?
I'll, I'll make a mo- or I'll, I'll have a discussion, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, I just, you know, I, I wanted to raise those two line items. Um, I did bring those to the attention of the town manager, whom I believe brought it back to the, uh, finance director. And I think, um, by raising both of these lines by fifty thousand dollars, we're still falling within the conservative ra- range on the, on the revenue side. Uh, but it was a little bit more appropriate to, to bump it up by fifty thousand dollars each.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none. I see no one's hands raised. So, um, uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Uh, item C, uh, Jim, you're going to make a motion on item C, I believe?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve three hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars for the Recreation Department budget for fiscal twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Del Santo. Uh, let's open it up for discussion. Any discussion on the recreation budget? Okay, hearing none, Madam, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Madam Chair, should we just state why we, why we like it out?
I was going to answer the procedural question. Um, anytime someone, uh, has a, uh, has a conflict issue, they've always asked to separate that particular department out. So there was a request. We've done it for many years. So that's why when I proposed the, the structure of the motions, we separated the Recreation Department.
Thank you for that. Thank for, thank you for explaining that, um, Mr. Town Manager. I don't hear any other discussion on the motion. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
I'm going to abstain, and that's why I asked Mark to with, to separate it seasonally for the Recreation Department. So I'm going to abstain.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Uh, item D, uh, on the general government, uh, Bill, I think you wanted to make a motion on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in connection with the general government budget, I'd make a motion to reduce the general government budget by two hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in the following line items. Contingency, two hundred thousand. Contingency salary increase, thirty-six thousand, five hundred. Library for temporary and seasonal, twenty-five hundred. For overtime, one thousand. Database service, six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Books and multimedia, one thousand, two hundred and fifty. Automation system, five hundred. Dues and conferences, fifteen hundred. Barnes overtime, two thousand. And approve the following, fifty-five million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars for the general government budget, not including recreation, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second to this motion?
Second, Madam Chair.
Jim Morelli, I see that. Thank you so much. Let's open it up for discussion. Anyone wish to discuss it? Yeah, uh, Chris?
Um, once again, I'm just disappointed that, um, there wasn't communication prior to tonight. It's, it's a lot on everything that was said, but it's kind of a lot to digest, um, this quickly, um, as we're going through this. So, um, our caucus had some discussions too. And if I could, I'd like to ask a question to town manager just because, um, I, I, I'm, I know there's a reason, but I just want to make sure it's, it's public. Um, I'm in the budget on page one twenty-eight and one twenty-nine on the clean water fund loan. Um, so Mark, first of all, on the top line, can you explain, um, the, the CWF principal sewers? It's, it looks like a percentage change, uh, ninety-three point five percent. But again, if you look at the fine line refunded loan for denitrification plant, and we are now paying bond. Can you, can you just explain a little bit about that line?
Yeah, I will explain. I was saying the process. Amelia explained the numbers. If you recall, um, we had the loan outstanding. Um, and what we did is we, we used bonds for it. So Amelia, you have all the numbers for that. This was done, was it last February, last January or the January before? I, I forget. We, we've, we did it.
We did it in the fall. Um, so, yeah. So basically what happened is that we had the opportunity to refund our clean water loan that we had on the D night plant. So that's why the numbers went down. But then we also, uh, I also, uh, did a permanent loan authorization for a, a good portion of the, for the twenty-two million dollars for the new plant. That's what we're starting to pay. So we're, we're getting, we got rid of the clean water loan for the D night plant. We bonded it. Okay, because we, we refunded it with bonds at a lower rate. And then we took on the new debt of twenty-two million on the, uh, new plant. And we'll still have more to take care of.
So, so it essentially went from half a million dollars to, to just to one point one million dollars. But it's because of the whole trade-out of the loans that we described.
Yeah. The loan is now part of the da- the, uh, principal and interest in the, in the bonds. And that now we, we've taken on a new loan.
Okay, so again, nothing we, we could really control, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that, that's, that's clear with that. On the other, the other question in the same, um, in the same budget, this is page one twenty-nine, um, for salary increases. So again, if I could ask, uh, Mark, um, salary increases fifty-nine point five percent going from two hundred forty-eight thousand to three hundred ninety-six thousand.
Yeah, last, last year, last year we had two unions. Uh, this year I have my big unions, police, fire and dispatch. Uh, so those are some big numbers. So that's why you see that number in there.
Okay. Oh, so, so it's not affiliated, I'm ju- I, it's not with, with sewer, it's just, it's across all town departments.
It's, it's the general government.
Yeah.
Got it.
Obviously, if we don't, you know, if we don't put it in there now and we do the raises, uh, we'd be, we'd be tapping the contingency, which has already come down a, a bit. So, uh, we have to put it in there as our, as a salary contingency, which we do, as you know, every cycle, because we don't always settle our contracts by June thirtieth of any given year.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else have any questions of the town manager or Amelia? Uh, and any other comments about the budget?
Madam Chair, I, I have a comment.
Yes, Tom.
Um, you know, i- if, if somebody's looking at this budget and they see, it caught my eye, you know, you see some raises that are, are a little bit higher on the, on the personnel side. Um, that caught my eye and I, I think it's worth, uh, an explanation from the town manager or the finance director as to why, why we see five and six percent raises on the wages.
Uh, that's, okay, let's, let's talk about one union first. Uh, our largest percentage union is a rank and file union. Uh, that contract expired on, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, with COVID, we obviously, uh, did not, did not be able to negotiate that contract. That contract was negotiated and approved by the council, I believe, in February. So what you see in the budget is a double. So it's two point two five percent, uh, for, for year one, two point two five percent for year two and two point zero for year three. So years one and two are put into this budget. So that's why you see a much higher number than two point two five.
Right.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, I'm ready to call the roll. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo?
No.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
No.
Pulis?
No.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, moving right along, motion to approve, uh, item number two. Uh, Mike, I believe that you had wanted to make a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve two hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars for the animal control fund budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jim. Okay, very good. Uh, we're open for discussion. Anyone want to talk about the animal control budget? Val is really an expert in it. She volunteers all the time with, uh, animal control. So I know this is dear to her heart. Uh, anyone have any, any questions or anything at all?
So can I, on, on that point, I know, I don't know if this is at the wrong time, but, um, Mark, just a question on the, the paving projects. And I know that there's money in there for the animal control facility, but it's for next year?
Yeah, that's in the, uh, that's, that's probably in our, that's probably in our capital, which you'll hopefully approve in your last motion.
Right, so this, so I'll ask that question when we talk about the capital budget then, because this wouldn't include that, right?
No, they, if it's, if it's a major paving project, it would be in the capital budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think we're done with discussion on animal control. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Uh, let's move right along to, uh, the next, uh, item. Uh, uh, Bill, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in connection with sewer fund budget, I'd like to make a motion to approve five million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars for the sewer fund budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Val. Okay, um, it's open up for discussion. If anyone has any questions or issues about the sewer budget, now's the time. I do not hear anyone. So we're going to move the motion. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you, everyone. And for, for the final motion, Paul, would you like to, uh, take care of the capital budget motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, five-year capital improvement plan. Uh, the project list and to proceed with the recommended funding strategies outlined in year one for twenty-three million, six hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Do I have a second?
Zero second, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's open for discussion. Anyone have a question about capital budgets?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom?
I make the same comment every year, but I, I think it's worth, um, an explanation from the town manager that we are approving the projects listed in year one. And the projects listed two through five are hypothetical in nature at this point, more of a game plan. Um, but we're approving the specific funding and projects for year one.
That is correct. I, I would call it, uh, good planning for years two through five. Uh, but, uh, yes, that's, that's, that's subject to change depending on the, uh, the changing of importance in the town of Sutherland. So you are correct. And also the important thing is that in the motion, it said the funding, if you notice, uh, we set forth the funding that we're recommending to the council. Obviously, it's either going to be bonded, fund balanced, cash, which is included in this budget, or we're going to be using budget reallocation money. Those are the four ways we're going to, uh, hopefully get through the whole, the aspect of, of the capital. And I'm looking, now that I have the capital out, I'm looking closely, Amelia, uh, the parking lot for the animal control. Was that in this year's budget we're currently in? Do you remember that one?
Um, actually, it's, uh, it's in the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-two, so it's next year's budget, Val.
Correct.
Yep.
That's the way it was presented.
Yep.
Right, thank you. I, I saw that. And I guess my question is, there's also monies in the budget, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand, I believe, for this, this coming budget. And it, it's, um, for different paving projects? So I didn't know, is there a possibility that, like, how do you determine what will be done under those projects? Is there ever a possibility that maybe the animal control facility driveway could be done, you know, earlier in this year? Because it's not a big expense.
No, no guarantee on that. What we do is the, um, the Public Works Director sits down with the department head. In this case, it would be the chief. And they go over, uh, their projects for the next five years. This one happened to be put in the next fiscal year's, uh, budget. So I would anticipate that it would be in next year's budget, not this budget. So, um, usually we don't do that. Um, obviously, if there's a major windfall, then we would look to next year's projects and come to the council for that. Um, but, uh, based upon the numbers I'm seeing here tonight, I don't expect that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just for the record also, I think it's important to note, um, as people are looking at the budget, that the capital improvement plan does include both the town government side and also the Board of Education side. And so there are a couple, uh, Board of Education projects in there for, um, oil tank remediation and removal at some schools and also the, uh, the Varsity Girls Softball Improvement Plan as well.
I do, I will say though, because as, as a, as a parting gift to our superintendent, Tim and I have always said, when it comes to capital, there are no government sides or Board of Ed side. Capital is capital. So, uh, in this particular case, that's, that's a team effort on capital.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Any, uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, so, uh, right now I, I'm going to move the motion. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
DiPaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, thank you, everyone. I, I would just like to say in closing, uh, our focus in this budget was to have a zero increase, uh, in this year's budget. That we would hold the line for one more year. Uh, and we wanted to do it as equally and as equi- with equity as we possibly could. And so the division of, uh, the reductions or whatever, uh, we went seventy-five, twenty-five with Board of Ed and town, which is the normal, uh, break in, in the budgets. And, um, and we tried to do it as much as we could. Um, the town, uh, with an increased revenue on, on those, with those two departments, plus, uh, uh, another, uh, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, brought that up to a twenty-five percent reduction. It reflected a twenty-five percent reduction. Uh, and, uh, and of course, on the Board of Ed. As I said before, we just felt that this year we just could not push it on the taxpayers this year, especially with the reevaluation of properties and people looking, uh, to try to keep their homes. So, uh, having said that, and I know there may be disagreements and, and different views on things. It was just something that we, uh, felt it was very important to hold the line and maintain. We look forward. We've always, uh, the whole council, as a matter of fact, has always been, uh, involved in promoting education. We want to continue in that. This is a difficult year. And so This is a difficult year, and so having said that, I'm ready to move on now uh to our item number five, report on special committees. Uh open space is our first. Uh Mr. Chaplinsky?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple uh things. The LEAF uh program is uh in the middle of a few different uh CSAs. There is the current uh flower CSA, which is uh sign up, it's a five-week program that's July to August, sixty dollars uh for the five-week uh flower CSA. There's also a chicken CSA which runs twenty-four weeks, and you could purchase um, you know, a chicken every week or uh one every other week that runs May to November. And then uh finally, we have our summer CSA uh which uh runs through the summertime, and you can opt in at various levels uh for the summer CSA. So please get out there, support local farmers, um support the LEAF program. Uh it's a wonderful program, Mark Ramsey and his team there. Um if you're not on their Facebook page, please get on their Facebook page, because they're uh a wealth of information, they're a joy to see uh out there all the time. And uh please, don't be afraid to to go out and visit the farm, uh say hi, uh do a tour and uh and sign up for a CSA. Madam Chair, also wanted to give a little bit more detail on the referendum and uh wanted to say thank you again to all the residents who came out. Um you know, I know we had someone come out last meeting with some concern about getting uh, you know, as many people out there and getting the word out there. I think um I think that the residents came out in full force, uh contrary to the the comment from last week. And uh I'm happy to report that this was the largest referendum that um that the town of Southington has had. Uh so I think um the participation was great. The last largest referendum was our middle school referendum, which we know was uh very highly um attended as well, at about twenty-eight hundred people. This one was a little over thirty-one hundred people. So uh the most important thing is that people went out and voted. Um this time, it was seventy-seven percent in favor of the development rights to the uh to the Southington Country Club land. And I wanted to take a minute to thank um thank the civic groups in town for allowing us to do information sessions. All of the groups, uh you know, the Calendar House, all the various civic groups, um thank all the volunteers who went out to uh to give uh the information session that was generated from the various town uh meetings that we had. I also wanted to thank town staff for their work, uh you know, on top of all the uh the additional and on top of all the other uh very busy things that are going on. Uh our town staff did a wonderful job of putting the information packet together. Uh it started with um, you know, leading up to and supporting the votes at all the different boards and then taking that information and consolidating it down into something that we could use um as at the various civic groups. So thank you to town staff and and for me personally, thank you to um Jay Baker for, you know, setting up the technology at each of these civic organization events to ensure that uh we had a computer and and um I want to give him a shout out, a special shout out. There was one, and my apologies, I want to say it in public. Uh we had a cross in communication. Uh I was gonna go out to do a test. I ended up uh, you know, trusting that he was gonna get it done, but I forgot to call him and tell him that I was uh not gonna come, and he stayed there the whole time. Uh and uh, you know, I I wanted to thank him and and thank uh Kim Braille as well in the uh Town Manager's Office uh for the wonderful work to do, the scheduling, uh the great communication and, you know, ensuring that everything was was going. Um to the Town Clerk as well for all the the communications, setting things up and and of course, the Elections Department as well. Uh finally, on that, I wanted to thank um the Town Manager, Mark Shoda, for his efforts, um you know, great leadership on this, the Town Attorney. And Madam Chair, you, of course, for your leadership in in the just all the discussions that we've had. Uh I want to thank uh Mike Ricchio, uh who's I see on the line here today for um, you know, his guidance and also the entire Open Space Committee. And finally, um you know, it was mentioned a little bit earlier, but we've we've tried, you know, to engage the uh the Calvinese and Castor families for um many years. You know, ten, twenty years on on and off for a variety of reasons. And um, you know, this is one that we went to the to to them with, and and we as a town have been wanting to preserve this land for for many, many years. The door always hasn't been open, but this time it was open, and we appreciate their uh generosity and and coming in lower than our appraisal uh and allowing us to go to referendum at that lower price, and we thank them for allowing us an opportunity to put this in front of the voters, to preserve this property um for us, for our kids, our grandkids, and uh and many generations to come. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Paul, and uh all of your work. I don't think we've ever, ever had as much open space presented to the council and the community as we have in the last few years. And uh I just want to thank you, Paul, because you have worked so hard and so diligently uh in pursuing open space. So that our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren will actually be able to see fields and meadows and woods and all of that. So thank you, Paul. Okay, very good. Um so uh let's move on to uh Public Works unless somebody else has something else to say about open spaces. If you do, I would want to close you off. Okay, very good. Mike, if we could go on to uh Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, just real real quick. Uh it can't be understated, you know, the amount of effort and work that Paul put in with the referendum and the open space and the work that he's done in the open space. That's it. Uh so uh just very briefly, we had our meeting last Wednesday and a couple of uh brief items. Uh the transfer station. I just want to remind everyone that if you have an old sticker, you will not be allowed to use the transfer station. They will turn you away. Uh you can get stickers anytime between eight-thirty and three-thirty PM at the Highway Department. Um or if if those hours don't work for you, you can always uh get a sticker by mail. There are explicit instructions on the Town website to do that. It's a very easy process, but um they really have to be firm. Uh no more uh old stickers. They expired on the thirty-first of March. So it you you do need a uh, you need you need to have a new sticker if you're planning on going to the transfer station uh this Saturday. Um they are working on the additional lanes to try to get some of the traffic off the street. Signs are being made right now. We're hoping in the very near future that those additional lanes will be open. To try to give some folks on Old Turnpike Road a little bit of a break. Uh I want to remind everyone again that on Friday, June fourth, there's gonna be another household hazardous waste uh drop-off at the transfer station. Sorry, it'll be at the Highway Department, but the entrance will be at the transfer station. Uh this is for Southington residents only. I do have one more opportunity at our next meeting to remind everyone, and we'll make sure that we get the information on social media as well. Uh the work room for the trail has been working diligently. Uh they do have some ideas as to how they want to proceed. Their next meeting, they're probably gonna do a site walk and work on site, so they're working hard. Uh Mrs. Zoni brought up um the dog park about making sure that there's that it's handicapped accessible. And Mr. Inquest is gonna look into it to, you know, we all know the dog park gets pretty muddy after rainfall. So if someone is uh not able to walk and they're in a wheelchair or they do need assistance, um it would probably not be uh wise to use a wheelchair in the muddy area for the dog park. But she she will look into it and make sure that at least the entrance into the dog park is uh is stable enough for someone that's handicapped that can't make it into the park. Um so they're gonna be working on that. Uh there, more to more to follow on that at our next meeting. Um Spring Street, I know we've talked about this uh a bunch of times, but we are about two or three weeks out from the permitting, and the project itself may take a couple of weeks. So we're hoping at the very start of the summer uh that that turning lane on Spring Street will be taken care of. Um we're gonna talk a little bit later about trench rest- restoration, and uh they selected a contractor. It was, it happened to be the low bid, and that was approved unanimously, and we're gonna talk about that later on in the meeting. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Is there anyone that has any questions?
I I do, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Councilman Del Santo. Uh I just wanted to thank uh Councilman Del Santo and uh Annette Turnquest. Um last year, there was an incident on uh Hillside Avenue in Plansville where a sidewalk was damaged. Um I don't think it's possible to figure out exactly who damaged it, but that uh sidewalk was repaired. Um Annette called Eversource, and the issue was taken care of in uh late April, so thank you on that. And I was going to bring it up at the next meeting, but since I won't be in attendance, I wanted to talk about it now. And maybe Councilman Del Santo, you could bring it back to the Public Works, and we could just get some details. There's a program in town that I don't think a lot of residents uh know about or take advantage of. And that's the sidewalk reimbursement program that the town does, where the town will reimburse forty percent of a sidewalk. We're investing a lot of town money every year to 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 try to keep up with the sidewalks. We've heard time and time again that in order to do everything, it would cost a a an extremely uh high amount. So maybe the Public Works uh group can just take a look at what do the residents need to do? Specifics on hiring contractors, things like how do they get reimbursed? And then maybe at the first meeting in June, we could just kind of put a brief statement out there on the council floor. So um yes, the town is paying sixty percent, or or the homeowner is paying sixty, and the town's paying forty, but it it really is a win-win for the residents and the town. So I think that's something we should bring up uh a little bit more frequently.
Very well, Tom. We'll add that to our agenda for our next Public Works meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much, uh Mike. Uh let's move on. Uh item six, Town Manager's Report and Communication.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh the first item is a uh holdover from our last meeting. Uh this was the CDBG grant. Lisa Lowe is our consultant on that. Um there were some questions on the uh on the resolution, so Lisa did look back. She was using the two thousand sixteen resolution. She updated to the two thousand and twenty uh language. Um and uh and I believe that that's sufficient, uh it has all the concerns uh that the council had at the last meeting. Uh also, part of the, part of it was a request to see uh how many Southington families have used the program. Let me just briefly explain the program for a second. Um the program is, the town applied for two four-hundred-thousand-dollar grants, which we received. We have a third party, in this case, Lisa Lowe is retiring, so we'll have to get a new party in there. Where uh low and medium-income families can use the money, uh get the money loaned to them, uh and uh they're able to do things such as put in a new furnace, windows, roof, whatever. Uh and the the payment schedule is very, very lenient. Uh normally, we get paid back when they either refinance or sell the house. It comes back into the town, and that fund just keeps uh keeps uh being loaned out again. So uh we do have eight hundred thousand dollars. Unfortunately, it's, well, fortunately, it's loaned out now, so we only have eleven thousand uh back in. But as we get more money in, we'll be loaning it back out again. So uh like I said with the consultant with that, and I know that um uh there may be a question or two on the resolution, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Yeah, Chris, I saw your hand. I didn't want to inter- inter- uh intervene uh when the town uh manager was speaking, but go ahead, Chris.
No, no problem. I just didn't want to move on to the next topic. No.
No.
Question. I just want to give a shout out to um Val. Um thank you, Val, for pointing out the language that was omitted from from that. Um thank you, Mark, for then taking that and going back to the state. Um but but obviously, Val, we really appreciate you doing that so that we could get the approval from the state with the appropriate language.
Good, thank you. Yes, I agree. Thank you.
There's uh no further questions on that. There's action later in the uh in the agenda. Uh the next item does not need action, but it requires me to report to you, but it seems like it's already been reported to you, that the uh the citizens of the town of Southington, uh per your request, uh did go to the polls uh last week, and they overwhelmingly approved the purchase of the development rights. Um it's my legal obligation to report to you that I'm now turning this matter over to the Town Attorney, uh who will then move forward with the uh with the sellers and execute. I did sign the copy of the contract. Now that you gave me permission to do it with the vote, I gave the contract to him. He will now schedule a closing. I've alerted the uh Finance Department that to have to have money prepared in the next two weeks. So Jeremy, I hand the situation over to you. Uh it is now in your hands to schedule and perform the closing on behalf of the town of Southington.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions for the Town Manager? I have one, Mr. Town Manager, and uh would you let us know uh about our next meeting?
Yes, I will, and I, and then I'll do the trench bid, but um we are gonna be introducing a bond ordinance. I'm not gonna get into the specifics of it, but we will be interested in using a bond ordinance at our next meeting. Um as you're fully aware, uh the governor's executive orders expire on uh May nineteenth. Our meeting is gonna be May twenty-fourth. Uh with discussions with our bond counsel, uh she does not feel comfortable uh in in issuing a bond ordinance, which has specific banking regulations attached to it uh in a WebEx format, because uh once the executive orders end, the authority to do a WebEx meeting ends. So therefore, uh I'm authorized, I'm authorizing the uh the next council meeting to be at the Municipal Center in person uh on the twenty-fourth of May at uh seven PM. And at that time, obviously, the chair and I will be working on the uh agenda, starting probably Wednesday. Um but the reason why we have to do that is because the banking regulations require us when we uh when we do a bond ordinance. So we will be all together uh at the council chamber, excuse me, at the uh Assembly Room at the Municipal Center uh next uh the twenty-fourth at seven o'clock.
And Mark, uh will folks also be able to view the meeting?
Well, we we always do the live streaming, so we're gonna do the live streaming, and uh the IT department's working on a hybrid system. Uh we hope to have it in place. If we don't, then obviously, it's the same thing. We're gonna have a hybrid. Uh it's gonna be streaming like we always do, so they're certainly able to do that. So they're welcome to come in the, we have plenty of seats, so they're welcome to come there. Um there's going to be two presentations, um obviously, one with the bond ordinance and the Board of Education has requested a presentation also. So there'll be two presentations at that meeting. But I can't stress enough, the reason why we're required to have it isn't because of anything else on the agenda except for the bond ordinance. I have to have it in person, so.
Okay.
That means I do have one more item, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, uh Mr. Del Santo mentioned this. Uh for those of you who are relatively new to the council, as you know, we have third-party contracts, contractors that open up our roads many times during the year, whether it be the Water Department, uh Eversource, whatever. Uh what we do is we require them to put a temporary trench in. The temporary trench sits in for us for a long period of time, whether it be eight, ten, twelve months. After that, we have a contractor come in and redo all the trenches. Now, the people who put the trenches in, the people who put the cuts in the first place, pay a fee to the town of Southington, which we put in, and then we pay this contractor. So uh every couple of years, we uh we go out to bid uh for this. Uh it went out to bid and uh was approved by the Public Works Committee, and the bid is forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars and forty cents um by William M. Layton Construction of uh North Haven. Uh the other bid was over sixty-six thousand dollars. Uh Layton has done work for us in the past. Uh the Public Works Division is very comfortable working with them, so I recommend that when it comes to that point in your agenda. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Hearing and seeing no hand raised, let's move on to Town Attorney's Report, please. Um Attorney Taylor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh well, we briefly heard uh the Town Manager speak about the upcoming closing of the development rights in Southington Country Club. That will be in the next couple of weeks, so I won't touch on that any more than that, to say that um everything's been handed over to me, and I will proceed accordingly. And secondly, I just want to take a brief second to uh thank Roger Dietz of the Southington Magazine for letting me uh draft an article on this recent issue of the Southington Magazine about um our wonderful town staff, department heads, uh first responders, town council, and the town manager. Um had the opportunity to write this article just about what challenges the town has faced over the last year, year and a half of this uh pandemic, and how they navigated and responded to these challenges. So a little self-promoting, but I think it's just a great article to let our residents get an inside look on, you know, what the town experienced and and how our wonderful town of Southington responded to it. So and that's it. Check it out. Uh thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the uh Town Attorney? Okay, uh hearing none, I will be moving right into Public Communications. Uh this is a time for the public to speak uh and for us to listen. And uh we ask that uh you uh um make respectful comments, and we will respect you also. So uh hearing that, uh Mr. Chaplinsky, are we going, we will go, we will start with folks that are on the computer if they wish to make a statement. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, and the chat function is also open. If they're not on video, where they can raise their hand and they want to type type in that they would like to speak. I see Mr. Ricchio raises his hand.
Yep. Well, why don't we start with you, uh Mr. Ricchio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Um I was excited to sit and listen to this meeting because of what just happened the other day with the purchase of the development rights. So I wanted to take a minute. As you know, I'm actively involved in in the Open Space Committee, and I've been involved with Open Space since, I think, since Andy Mead started it back in the nineties. Um first of all, this council, all nine of you, um should pat yourselves on the back. Um it was a unanimous decision to to support this. And the response was the most amazing I've seen in all of our open space referendums. Um there were signs everywhere, there was chatter all over social media, the newspaper had some great stories on it, and it all started with the nine of you, so I wanted to thank all of you um for that. And um I have to say, out of all the pieces that we've been involved in purchasing, I think this is like, you know, the creme de la creme. And this was, this piece is just an amazing parcel. you know, the creme de la creme, and this was, this piece is just an amazing parcel. And, um, it's kind of satisfying to know that, you know, for, for the next, for an eternity, people will be able to enjoy, even if they don't golf, they'll be able to enjoy the vistas. And who knows what happens to golf in a hundred years from now. Um, maybe it'll be some other type of recreational use. We just don't know. But what we do know is that it won't be a housing subdivision. Um, so thank you all for that. I, I, as it was mentioned earlier, we, we really owe a debt of gratitude to the Calvinese and Castor families for giving the town the opportunity. We've been pursuing them for years, and, um, they, they finally, um, were, as somebody said earlier, opened the doors to us. And so we, you know, I would like to thank them as well. And then lastly, and, and, and I heard, I think, maybe Councilman Triano said something, but um, in, in all the years I've been involved in open space, I've never seen a chairperson, um, do so much and spend so much time and effort and energy in pursuing parcels as, as, uh, Councilman Chaplinsky has. And, and I know he probably, I don't know, I can't see him on his screen, but he probably doesn't even want to hear this, but thanks to Paul for, um, what he does, um, as a chairman. Like I said, it's amazing what you've accomplished in just, in just two years on this. So thank you, and thank you for allowing me to be a member of the Open Space Committee. That's all.
Thank you, Mike, very much. We appreciate all of your work also. Very good. Uh, are there any other folks that would like to come forward? We're working from the computers right now. Do you see anybody, Paul?
I don't, Madam Chair.
Okay. So if you're on the phone, uh, we're ready to take your calls. Uh, Paul, go ahead, explain. I think it's star six, I believe.
That's correct, Madam Chair. Anybody on the phone who would like to speak now during public communication may press star six and unmute themselves. I don't see any, Madam Chair.
Okay, last call. Okay, thank you, Paul. We're going to close Public Communications down. Um, and let's move right into Old Business. Item nine, action on trench restoration bid. May I have, uh, a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mike Del Santo. Second by Chris Pulis. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions or objections? Seeing none, I see it passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Uh, item B is action on the Fair Housing Resolution. Uh, and, uh, and may I have a motion? Val, would you like to make a motion on this?
Oh, sure, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the Fair Housing Resolution.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
That, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, I see that it passes unanimously. Thank you all. Uh, New Business Tax Refunds, Val?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the tax refunds as outlined in our packet.
Madam Chair, a second, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions or, uh, objections? Hearing none, I, uh, approve it unanimously. Thank you. Appointments, uh, Mark, uh, you have the Conservation Commission alternate appointment.
Madam Chair, Conservation Commission alternate. Uh, I've been given the name of Jacob Gorski, and he is hereby appointed to a term expiring April of two thousand twenty-five.
Very good. Thank you so much. Item two is the Library Board. Uh, Tom Lombardi?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forth the name of Maureen Gagnon for the Library Board for a four-year term expiring November two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Do you have a second for Maureen? Thank you, Jim. I see your hand. Thank you. Um, uh, yes, yes, go ahead, Chris.
Vicky, I know I reached out to you, but
You did.
Um, I, I think, um, I have to put forward as well.
Sure.
Um, I, I'd like to put forward, um, the name of Paul Mazacaro. Um, especially with this, Paul has done some work with our Library Board for the referendum. Um, he was the Chief Administrative Officer of the Westport Library from twelve to July two thousand nineteen, including during a twenty-eight-point-eight-million-dollar renovation project from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. Prior to that, he was also the Business Manager for Waterbury Public Schools. So certainly comes with a, a whole lot of experience. And again, I know I reached out to you, uh, you know, and I apologize, but I just feel that passionately that we have a name that I, I need to put forward.
And, and I, you know, he sounds like he's very qualified as well, Chris. So there's, we, that's why we have two parties. So absolutely. So, uh, thank you. And we have a second for, uh, Paul Mazacaro, Caro's name?
Oh, I'll second that, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Val. Yep. Okay, so, um, anyone, any objections on any of these candidates? So what we're going to do is we're going to just take a voice vote, and what we will do, we will respond accordingly, uh, for either Paul Mazacaro or for Maureen Gagnon. And so, uh, Madam Clerk, would you, uh, call the roll, please?
Del Santo.
Gagnon.
DePaolo. Mazacaro. Dietzick.
Gagnon.
Lombardi.
Maureen Gagnon.
Morelli.
Gagnon.
Palmieri.
Mazacaro.
Pulis.
Mazacaro.
Chaplinsky.
Gagnon.
Triano.
Maureen Gagnon. Thank you, everybody, and I'm sure, uh, Paul will, uh, had, who has served very well. I'm, you know, I'm very happy you brought his name forward. Thank you, everyone. All right, uh, this has been a difficult meeting. I want to thank the members of the council who have done their due diligence, and sometimes we disagree, and sometimes we agree, but, but that's what makes the council, uh, good. And so thank you, everybody, uh, for your input tonight, your opinions and your voting. And, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Del Santo. Is there a second? I see Mr. Morelli's hand raised. All those in favor to adjourn? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody. Take care. Thank you all. Thank you, Paul.